Good evening and welcome to the 2015 Candidates Forum. My name is Sidney Toshlog Jobe and I will be your moderator for this evening. First up, we have our City Council at-large candidates, Democrats Tim Bentley and Mike Ganser and Republicans Mike Bishop and Gabe Nobby. We are going to start with an opening statement from each candidate and we will start with Mr. Bentley.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Tim Bentley. I am a lifelong resident of Fayette County, married to my wife Gina for 19 years, and we have three kids. Destiny, whom just graduated last year, Jacob is a senior, and we have Joshua, who is a seventh grader. So, been involved in the community and excited about the opportunity to be on council this coming January and look forward to talking and answering some questions this evening.
Okay, Mr. Ganser.
Good evening. My name's Mike Ganser. I'm a lifelong resident of Fayette County also. My wife is Donna, former Donna Hilbert. We have two sons, and we have one on the east coast and one on the west coast, and I try to get them back here and the weather just won't cut it, you know? But I think that I'm looking forward to serving on the council. I have a lot of background in management and budgets and supervision, and I think the next four years, as the last four years, are going to be certainly challenging, and I think I have a lot of time to give towards that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bishop.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mike Bishop, and I have lived in Fayette County since 1969 upon returning from the service during the Vietnam War. My wife of 32 years, name is Wanda. I'm a retired Visteon. When I retired in 2001, I was the production manager over radiator, and I am currently, over the last eight years, soon-to-be-eight years, served on the Board of Public Works. I'm very proud of our city. I think our city has a lot of potential, but there's work to be done, and I have some ideas, and I'm looking forward to attacking those ideas at the best of my ability in the next four years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nobby.
Good evening, Gabe Nobby. I'm just born and raised in Fayette County. I was raised on a small farm where I learned that a hard day's work really pays off. I have two lovely children, a six-year-old and a five-year-old. Married to my beautiful wife, Megan. Dob is Nobby now. And been married for 11 years. I've served on the council for almost four years now. I've really got my feet wet and understand the situation we're in now. I love this town. I want to see it better. I want to make a good home for not only all the residents that are here that now, but also the future residents, our children, and then really focus and maybe have an opportunity to bring them, to have opportunities to stay here and live in this great community like I have the opportunity to be.
All right. Thank you guys very much. We're going to start with our first question. Mr. Bentley, we'll start with you. Indiana state law permits a city to impose a public safety income tax of 1.5%. The law also requires the LOIT and COIT tax, which is already in place locally. This would raise the local income tax to around 4%. Would you vote for passage of a public safety tax and why?
Well, I guess my initial thought would be that I wouldn't want to tax the people any more than they currently are. I would want to be, to get a better understanding of the current taxes and if they're necessary, if we could maybe look at, I guess, shuffling some things around and things like that. You know, again, I'm a first-timer. I tell people that I don't really consider myself a politician, but I'm somebody that cares about this city and I want to see things better for Connersville. So, I think I would want to get in there, understand the budgets, understand more about what the financial crisis is and burdens we're up against, and then based on the facts, be able to make an educated decision from there.
Thank you very much.
Well, I'm opposed to any increase in any taxes. I know Indianapolis has been talking about imposing that for the body cameras. We have so many infrastructure problems here, whether it's the utilities, the street department, the streets, that I don't know where that's going to go, what kind of money we're talking about, where it's going to come from, and how that may or may not burden the taxpayer. I don't know at this time, but right now, I would say I'm not, I'm opposed to raising taxes for anything right now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bishop.
I think I would have to investigate it a little more thorough and get into, you know, what this really means, but I am definitely against raising taxes in Fayette County. We have got so many other issues that we need to worry about more than this, and I think before I would make any decision on this particular matter, and I'm not so sure this can even be forced on us, but I would like to investigate it and understand it better before I would answer that question.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nobby.
The idea of instituting a public safety tax is one that's often brought up. We're in a financial crisis, and this is one option that we could increase the funding of our city. However, at this time, I'm not in favor of raising taxes on any person in our county. We are in a county that has the lowest income. We're in a city that's definitely in an economically depressed area, and instituting a tax that is already, is going to raise our taxes even higher when we're already one of the highest tax rates currently, I think that doesn't make a lot of sense. I think when we look at our budget, we have to be very careful with how we plan it. We have to be very meticulous in appropriating monies, and we really need to investigate some of our contracts and how they're laid out and make good choices, not only for today, but for the future.
All right. Thank you very much. We're going to move on to our second question. Mr. Ganser, you will be starting off. Recently, the city approved the purchase of property off Veterans Memorial Drive to move the Babe Ruth complex. Do you support this plan? Why or why not?
Well, I kind of always saw that as a two-point issue. One was the purchase of the land, and the second, to create a sports complex, not necessarily a Babe Ruth complex. I think the land and the Riverwalk and all certainly does make a lot of sense if we want to improve the quality of the town, but as far as the sports complex or the Babe Ruth Diamonds, you know, I don't know whether it's baseball fields or more soccer fields or what it might be, but I think regardless of what it, what that is, if we can get help from the foundation to provide the additional, the funds to provide that, then, you know, that's another thing. The other issue is, is that, you know, I, I look at it almost like a Walmart thing, you know? Walmart moved out there, there's no way for anybody, anybody to get out there. We have no sidewalks going there. I'm concerned for the safety of the kids that perhaps don't have any other way to get there but on a bicycle or walking. So, you know, although I support the, you know, purchase of the land and looking at the Riverwalk and what we can do down there and the river, and boat launching, the sports complex, I'm just not sure whether the Babe Ruth Diamonds are all inclusive of that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bishop.
As far as do I support this plan or not, I support it 100% because I think we have to think of our younger generation. They're our future, and they're, well, it's going to be running this city one of these days, and that place where they're playing in now is just pitiful. I mean, every time the river gets up, we have to get volunteers to come in there and clean it up, and it destroys everything, and I would just venture to say that if we could get an outfit like Sherry Lab or someone in to come and take composite samples out of that ground down there, if you went the perimeter of the land, it's hard to tell them what you might find in that soil. And I have done some homework on this, and there's a lot can be developed out of this. It's not just going to be a baseball complex. It's going, there's going to be a lot of things branch off of this, and I don't want to go into a lot of detail about it because I don't know a lot about it yet, but I think it's going to be good for Connersville. It's going to be good for our kids. I can't remember what it was, but when Babe Ruth, a while back, won the World Series or whatever they played, the biggest three complaints that I heard was it was filthy, the parking was so congested that you couldn't get in and out, and there was no eateries or no place to stay. Well, we can't. The eateries and the hotels is a different issue, but cleaning that park up is, it's a waste of time, and it's not fair to our kids, and we have an opportunity because that money's sitting in an environmental improvement account, and I think the last count I had it, we're drawing like a half a percent interest. Why not spend it? I just spoke with Anna Duncan last night, and they're in the process of buying the land, and this is not going to be a short-term thing. It's going to take some time to get it developed, but we can go through grants and we go through fundraisers, and I think it's, my personal opinion is, I think it's going to be good for Connersville, myself.
Thank you, Mr. Nobby.
When looking at the purchase of the land on Veterans Memorial Drive, I was actually involved in the decision-making there, and I took a lot of study on it, had lots of questions, and as many people do, and I came to the realization that this is a tremendous opportunity for our citizens, for the future and in our near future, to improve the quality of life. And I believe that quality of life is very important to not only the citizens that currently live here, but also our future. Like, when I, when I think about running for an office, when I first thought about it, I thought about my children, and I thought about what this place could look like and what it would look like in 20 years, and would they have the opportunity to come back or would they desire to come back? And I think these are the type of things that would interest young families and children to come back to our community to improve that quality of life. We've seen what the Monong Trail has done for areas north of Indianapolis, and I'm not saying that this would be exactly like that, but I think that's kind of a spark, a quality of life thing that people now desire, and if we can do anything to improve the quality of life around here, we're going to benefit our community.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bentley.
As far as the sports complex goes, I guess there are several different areas there to look at. You know, a sports complex, I'm 100% for. Like Gabe mentioned, I believe it would improve our quality of life. It would give opportunity and things like that. I guess the concerns I have, and I wasn't part of that decision-making, so I only know bits and pieces, but what I do know, the money that, that land was purchased with, I mean, I do believe we got a good, a reasonable price for the land, but that was, came out of a super fund, I believe, that was set up to clean up the city landfill. I know there was mentions of big plans and ideals for that Smalley Lake area, and after this decision was made to purchase that, I actually drove through Smalley's and looked around at what was there and things like that, and, you know, it's, it's a little disappointing, and that's, I guess, one of my concerns is that in the past, our government has tended to start projects and not see them through. So, would, would that money have been better spent to, to put that money into Smalley's Lake and finish that project that that money was really for? In regards to the current baseball fields, you know, I've coached in Connersville as well as Union County. I served on the youth board over there for their Little League program for four years. I've coached here for the Regan Street Boys and Girls Club for about 14 years. You know, I know it's easy to say, well, you know, that's, that ballpark just isn't up to snuff. We, we just need to wash our hands of it, you know? I guess I would argue that that ball field has served for decades here. I've been involved with that ballpark for well over a decade, and there is some issues there, but, you know, you know, I believe we have a lot of other things, a lot of other areas to focus on, so, you know, I think it's a matter of once elected that I want to be a part of determining where our priorities are and where we need to focus our energy and our time and resources at.
All right. Thank you very much. We're going to move on to our next question. Mr. Bishop, you will be starting. As a member of the city council, how would you improve the quality of life in Connersville?
Well, I think first of all, we need to clean up our city, and I've said this before. We need to investigate into the ordinances that pertains to this and make stiffer laws where the authorities have, you know, they're able to go and tell the people, this has got to be cleaned up and it gets done. And we also need to clean up our drug problem. Everybody knows that Connersville has a very, very serious drug problem, and, you know, in order to prove the quality of life in Connersville, naturally, we need jobs. That's no secret. Everybody knows that, but one thing kind of spins off of another, and if you get the city cleaned up and get people abiding by the law that they're supposed to, and we attack this drug problem like we're supposed to be talking, I think the quality of life, it'll, it'll clear itself up. It'll get better, and we've got to do it if we want more business in Connersville. That's, that's obvious, in my opinion.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Nobby.
My opinion on this, on how to improve the, the quality of life is, it's two parts. First, I think we do need to really adopt the broken window policy, and that's basically taking care of the little things. If we take care of the little things like ordinance enforcement, speeding violations, parking violations, things of that nature, then we'll find a lot of those other things that might be going on that are larger problems, such as drug issues. I mean, if a, if a person is dealing drugs or is out continuing using them, they're probably not paying attention to their grass length, and they're probably not paying attention to speed limits and things like that. So, it's an opportunity for law enforcement to potentially find some more of those hazards. So, I think that's one way. Another way, I think, is to create a, a system that allows, or a system where, first thing I would like to think is a trail system that adds to the quality of life. And year, for years, we've talked about a Riverwalk that extends the entire length of the beautiful Whitewater River. It is one of our best natural resources that we hide. Until recently, and it's not completely done yet, there is no public access to our river, which I think is a, is a shame. With the purchase of the, the land on Veterans Memorial, hopefully within the next few years, we're going to have public access to our, to our river, and, and that can just create tremendous opportunities. I'd like to see that continue and develop even further north and potentially connect the south end of town with the north end town, going up through the Nickel Plate Trail, maybe an extended thing, that trail on up into maybe the Greenway, the Cardinal Greenway. Now, that's a long time coming, but that is a vision, and I think if we have a vision and we operate on that vision, that's one way we can really improve the quality of life over the long term.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bentley.
In regards to the quality of life, I agree with the other candidates that we, we have to clean up our city. It's kind of a shame that some of our busiest streets are rundown. We have buildings that's boarded up, windows knocked out, things like that. So, we've got to clean up our city, and, you know, that, that has to start through enforcing ordinances and things of that nature, maybe fees or penalties and things like that. And I think, like Gabe mentioned, we, we don't promote ourselves well here in the city, and we have a lot of resources that, that I believe are underutilized. I think we need to promote what we do have. We need to identify those resources that we have, and we need to find ways to promote them. We need to find ways to get different groups and agencies involved. You know, Gabe mentioned the Riverwalk. We have the Whitewater Valley Railroad that I believe if the city and other people would partner with could be even bigger and better than it is. We have, you know, we've got the canal, the Canal House. We've got lots of beautiful homes here that I, that I believe we could promote and tour, let people see and things like that. I believe we've got one of the nicest parks, probably within a 40 or 50-mile radius, that I, that I believe we could utilize much more than we are currently utilizing it. So, you know, I think we have to clean up our city. We've got to find what resources we have available and, and utilize them to their fullest.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ganser.
Well, of course, I agree with the other candidates. You know, we have to clean the town up. I noticed that, know that Columbus has been working on ordinance and they're, Columbus, Indiana, on dealing with trash out in the front yard, on the front porch, et cetera. Indianapolis, just creating ordinance with the mayor's fund on getting rid of cars that are not running in their front yard, up on jacks, et cetera, and so forth. And I kind of see the whole thing, the quality of life has a three-pronged chair almost. You know, we have the drug problem, we have the job issue, and we have the town that, that needs, needs cleaned up. You know, if we can clean the town up first, to the best we can, and then deal with the jobs, whatever those jobs are, and then the people that we're rehabbing and create jobs for them, to get them out of the system, out of the drug system, then I think we'll turn things around and, you know, people are going to be interested in moving back to Connersville to be proud of it, whereas now, it's just, like Tim said, you know, some of the major streets are pitiful when you go down there. So, you know, I think, you know, I know that we, I suppose we still have the symphony program out of the high school that comes in through the year. You know, we have a nice auditorium out there, the park, the horse track. We, as a party, have, you know, looked towards being more aggressive in our tourism activities. There are a lot of things here, but, you know, you don't see it in literature throughout the state. You pick up those Indianapolis magazines and stuff, they talk about every place else, but even Richmond, you don't hardly see anything except the Whitewater Valley Railroad for Connersville. So, you know, I think through the chamber, the foundation, whoever's involved with that, you know, I think if we can get a little bit more aggressive on our tourism, that'll help spark interest, clean up the town more, and, and overall improve the quality of life.
All right. Thank you very much. We're going to move on to our next question. Mr. Nobby, you will be starting. What can be done to make Connersville more attractive to potential employers?
Well, I think really these, these last couple of questions kind of relate all to each other. They kind of interweave. I think by creating a, a very good quality of life around here, will attract a high-quality workforce that then will help to attract employers. I think that, that's probably number one. The second thing is, I think we need to really focus on the businesses we have that are currently operating and potential businesses that are out there. We got lots of people that are working on some very creative things in our community, and a lot of the, the growth and opportunity that, and the success that Connersville had in the past come from local people that started local companies that grew into large things. So, if we can focus on the people we have here and we focus on the, the current businesses we have here, I think things will improve, and especially if we improve that quality of life. And then once we start getting those things to grow, it becomes kind of like a snowball effect, and other businesses see us as a, as a city on a, on a hill, and, instead of under the hill, and they'll want to be here. It'll be, it'll be a good place to come, and I think that's probably the best way to do that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bentley.
I think, you know, again, we, we need to, they do interweave. We need to clean up our city. We need to find ways to promote quality of life. You know, those are all things that businesses look at. They want a, a city that they can be proud to live in, that they can, you know, raise their family, and that they'll be proud to spend most of their time here, which they will if they're part of that company. They're going to want to have activities. They're going to want to have things that their kids can do maybe, and that they can get out and do on the weekends and such. One of the big issues that I, you know, I think also hinder us from jobs is education. I think we have to find ways to educate our youth. I believe currently is about a 25% of our population that don't have a high school diploma, and that's one of the top things that most employers look at, is, is there, is there a employable workforce? So, I think we have to find ways to educate our youth and make sure they're getting diplomas, and even the older workforce, you know, continuing to, to grow themselves and educate theirself. And I think if, if we put all these things together, employers are going to see that we are aggressively wanting them to come here, and I think they're going to take a hard look at us, and, you know, I, you know, I just, I, I think those are the real focal points that we need to work on as far as attracting companies here.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ganser.
Well, you know, the city certainly is the, is the bottom line on a lot of these questions as far as getting it turned around, looking well. You know, potential employers, they want to know that their healthcare, our healthcare system here, the hospital is, is able to hold its own, provide the type of services that their family needs. Our school system, you know, that we have the industrial part of it and the academic part of it, and then that, you know, those kids can learn a trade here. We already have Ivy Tech and IU East holding classes here, and again, those things need to be put out there so these people with their, employers and their families can see that. You know, I know when I was involved with the hospital here and recruiting physicians, et cetera, and so forth, but, you know, a lot of times when we were talking to the families, you know, a lot of their concern was school system, the hospital and healthcare, but also places to shop, you know? And I know we spent a lot of time talking about needing jobs and everything, but even, even retail-type jobs, businesses, if we could attract them here, we have plenty of empty buildings. You know, I think that too makes a whole picture for employers to bring their company and their families here.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bishop.
I too think questions three and four kind of tie together, and the thing that's really frustrating to me about new businesses is Connersville has so many amenities to offer to an employer. I mean, we've got the extended airport, we've got the best aquifer in the world, I think. We've got a good school system. We've got, you know, if you just look at the things we have to offer, but where this all comes together is selling it. And I think one of the things that really hurt our city with, with new businesses coming in, because I was a part of that when Visteon went out of business, that kind of puts a bad taste in other employers' mouths because they think about, well, why did that go out of business? What's their problem? What's their issues? And I had the pleasure of being, while being on the Board of Works of touring with a couple prospects that came into our town to, you know, maybe, maybe bring their business with us, and, and one of the first comments out of their mouth was when we went by the plant, what happened there? But we got to figure out a way how we can sell it because we have plenty of facilities that's sitting here vacant that we could put small businesses in. I never, very seldom, use the word "never," but I don't think you will ever see a business come into town into Connersville, as small as we are, and pay $18 to sweep the floor like Visteon did, because what's happening now is the big businesses, they're wanting to set up satellite plants where they can put 100 or 200 people in it, and overnight they can shut it down and walk away and write it off on their taxes. So, what I, if I'm blessed to be elected, what I intend to do is I want to work more closely with Mr. Parker on the EDG system, and I'm retired. I've got all the time in the world, and I'm available 24/7 at his convenience if he needs me. And again, I just think we have, I, I am proud of Connersville. I think we have a lot to offer, and we need to just raise ourselves up out of the ashes and get our chin out and go to work, and that's what I intend to do if I'm elected.
All right. Thank you very much. We're going to move on to our last question. Mr. Bentley, this will be you, starting first at least. Other cities have reduced their costs by combining services such as EMS and fire. What are your thoughts on this idea?
Well, I know it's been talked about, and other cities have had success with that, though I do think we have a great first responder team here, but I think it's definitely something maybe that we should look at, that we should consider. You know, growing up my entire life here in Connersville, that's one of the, I guess, one of the things that I could, that I've seen that I wished maybe was different. Seems like when Connersville was going good, we had Visteon and different companies that were, you know, that were employing our people and, you know, we didn't have this financial emergency. Seems like everybody kind of went their own way. Everybody had their own agendas, and if they didn't like it, well, okay, I'll go over here and do my own thing and different things. But I think one of the best things we could do as a city is find ways to partner together, link arms together, and move forward as a team. And if, if that, if that means the city and the county trying to come together to the table and figure out a creative way to save both the city and the county money, then, then I would definitely be 100% for it. I wouldn't want that to interfere with any of the current first responders' positions or anything. Like I said, they're all doing a great job, and I think we need to support that, but if there's a creative way that we can merge or branch those, the city and the county together, then I think it's definitely something we should look at.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Ganser.
I agree with Tim. I think there probably are some possibilities with looking at some city and county sharing of services. EMS and fire, I don't know what that would really do. The EMS building, if I recall, I think that was put together in 1957, and I believe there was, that, that building and the ambulance, the first ambulance was all donated by people in town here. And so, if we were looking at combining EMS with the fire department, I think that's something that, you know, all the taxpayers should be involved with because it was two donations that that got started. In fact, I think I was seven years old at that, at that time, and was walking home from school, got hit by a car, and it was the day before the EMS opened up, and so I was taken to the hospital in a, in a taxi cab. But, you know, had that not been there, hadn't it not been in the works to be there, that may be the way it always would have been. So, I, I think, you know, city and county sharing of services, you know, the street department, the county highway department, sheriff's department, police department, yeah, I think there's some opportunities there. EMS and fire, I just don't know that that's going to reduce any people. I think you're still going to have to have the same number of people. So, I would say, I, leave that alone.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Bishop.
Naturally, everyone is resistant to change, okay? Nobody likes change, and being on the Board of Works for the past almost eight And being on the Board of Works for the past almost eight years, we have talked about this several times. We've talked about it with the, with the people that's involved in it, we've talked about it with the unions. And yeah, the big cities, some of them have been successful with it and some of them haven't. Myself, I would like to see it happen for the simple reason, our financial status is in such duress right now that we need to do something to change. But if we all don't work together in the next four years, it's not gonna matter. I mean, if we don't get some revenue in here and get some money coming into the city and by doing this, there's advantages and there's disadvantages. And I think it needs, there's more homework needs to be done on it. And I think there needs to be more roundtable meetings about it, but right now the, you know, some people are for it and some people are against it. So I just think that it's a good idea, but you need to work it at, to a plan and see how the plan turns out. And that's another thing that I wanna get involved in if I'm elected.
All right, thank you very much. We're gonna go on to Mr. Nabi.
Well, um, looking at the budget, uh, we're, we're getting ready to release a, a new budget here and approve a new budget for next year. And, and looking on the budget, because I'm on the finance committee, uh, we have a, a budget I think is gonna be sound, it is gonna be tight, um, but, but combining services at this juncture doesn't make sense. Uh, the way in which the county, uh, and the city share the EMS service and then trying to combine them to just solely, uh, fire, a city's fire service at this juncture doesn't make sense. If we were to combine the, the EMS with the, uh, fire, it would essentially leave the county with no EMS service whatsoever unless the city then wanna take on the entire, um, bill for the entire, the county of free EMS. At this juncture, it's costing us about $500,000 a year to run EMS as a individual unit and it allows, and the fire, um, costs us substantially more. And, uh, to combine them at this juncture just, it really doesn't make sense. Now, if we get in a, a position where in the next three to five years where we suffer some really, really major losses and the budgets become extremely tight and we have to look at that, then we might have to make some difficult decisions. But at this point, I think we still have enough time. If we look at the, the contracts, uh, for the city employees to, uh, to make some adjustments, and I'm not talking for current employees, I'm talking for any new hires, um, that would allow for, uh, the revenue to, to fund both these entities.
All right, thank you. Thank you all for participating. Right now, we would like to ask you to go ahead and give a closing statement, okay? We're gonna start with you, Mr. Ganser.
Well, I certainly look forward to serving on the council. My background is 47 years in healthcare, half of those years have been in management and, um, supervision. I've worked thoroughly with budgets, I've negotiated health insurance contracts, uh, million-dollar equipment. I think I can lend a lot to the council and assist the mayor in those, in those processes. You know, I think our budget process, I'm, I'm not quite sure how it all works with the city, but to me, I think that the council needs to become more involved with the budget line by line. I'd almost, I would almost see, like to see the city go to a zero-based budget where everything is justified at a council meeting for, through the Board of Works. I think sometimes people think, I got a budget, that means I got this to spend on whatever. I see no prioritization to it. I think there's lots of issues there, um, that could save money through the budget process that certainly the city needs extra cash. And, and, and also I, I think I would, you know, with the financial emergency and that probably did occur the way it did occur, but it seemed to me that there was a big surprise at the council meeting as it was in the, as it was in the community. So when the, the mayor turns to the, um, clerk treasurer and asks for a report, I would expect that clerk treasurer to give a report of the city's financial status at each meeting.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to Mr. Bishop.
Serving on the Board of Works for the last eight years has certainly been an eye-opener for me. I think I have proven that I, I'm qualified, um, I think I'm a team player. One example I can give you of my experience in the past is when we disbanded the utilities board. It's no secret, utilities was in trouble and the mayor asked me to get involved in it because of my background at Visteon and I did. And along with the help of the employees over at the utilities department, within six months, we were able to turn it around and get it going in the right direction and thankfully it's still going that way. I truly believe that we have to work together in the next four years and if I'm elected, that's what I intend to do. And I just thank you for allowing me to have this time.
Thank you, Mr. Nabi.
First of all, I'd thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. It's been a great evening. And I'd like to, to thank everyone for the last four years of, of being able to serve this great community. It's been a, a great opportunity for me. I hope I have served, uh, everyone well. I know everyone hasn't agreed with my, my decisions all the time and I don't expect them to. I think the, the proof's there, uh, on, on my abilities. I've always served my conscience and, and always tried to do what's best for the interest of the people of Connersville. I hope that, uh, that people of this community feel the same and in November, uh, they'll hope to hopefully vote me in again. So thank you.
All right, thank you very much. We're gonna go to Mr. Bentley.
Well, again, I wanna thank everybody for the opportunity for tuning in tonight, listening to what we have, uh, what we've had to say and our thoughts and ideals. You know, like, like several of us mentioned and, uh, obviously with these questions, there's some difficult things ahead of us in the coming years and, uh, things like that. So I, I think this is a very important election, a very important time that we've gotta have the right people elected into these offices and, uh, um, you know, I believe I am that person. I believe with my experience, both in, in work and my work ethic and things like that, I believe I'm up for the challenge. Not only that, but, uh, you know, I've volunteered a lot here in the city, uh, throughout, uh, sports programs, church and things like that. And, and I say that to say this, that simply that, that I care about this city, I care about, um, the citizens from young to old and, and I wanna see things get better. And I think electing me on November 3rd to be your council at large would be a good choice. And, uh, you know, I also encourage everybody to, uh, I believe Monday is the last day to register if you're not registered to vote. So if you're not, please, uh, get with one of us, uh, that's running, go on to indiana.org, go into the BMV, get registered to vote and let your voice be heard. And I hope come January 1st that you'll let me be your voice on city council.
All right, thank you guys very much. Next up, we will have the candidates for the office of City Council District One.